I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here and out on the phone lines to the regular session of Goldendale City Council for August 3, 2020. We'll begin with the roll call as Connie can give us that.
Julie?
I'm here.
Lauren? Lauren? Shannon?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Filberto?
Here.
Myland?
Here.
Well, we have four.
So we're missing Lauren. Shannon was there.
Yeah, we're missing Lauren and Filberto.
Okay.
I don't think they know they're supposed to call in and let us know they're going to not make it.
Yeah, usually Lauren sends a text or email. We need a motion. I guess we have to have a motion.
To excuse them, we do. We need a motion to excuse the two council members?
Right.
Julie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Julie. Do you have a second?
Second, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Maker and Phil Monteveros from attending City Council tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
The next item is a public hearing on the six-year street plan, and I believe Dustin Conroy is on the line. Dustin?
So last week, Larry, or said a couple weeks, Larry and I sat down and updated the six-year street plan.
We can't hear you very good.
Can you hear me better now?
A little bit.
I can call in on the regular phone line if that works better.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Larry, I sat down a couple weeks ago on the big six-year street plan. This is in anticipation of applying for a TIB grant. They require a six-year street plan to be adopted by the city in order to proceed, to accept an application. And so last year, our main project that will be applied for was the fire street project. And so we have just updated that to the first priority again. And then Chusser Street from in front of the primary school to Pollen Street was our second priority, so that one left for 2021. And Norton Hill Street from Broadway to City Limits was on the previous one. We added Pipeline Road from Third Street to High Street, and that one we had anticipated for 2022 project. King and Brooks, this is over by the middle school, will be a 2023 project, Chip Seal project on Rosebelt Street from Broadway to Simcoe. East Simcoe will be a Chip Seal project from Highway 97 to Columbus in 2024. And then we added, that's a project for 2025, Darlin Street, and that was from Columbus to Washington. And we updated the anticipated costs for each of those projects. I also went through, and TIB does the scoring on every street every year, and I got their scoring, and you can see that on the spreadsheet divided. So Dustin, we into our six-year street plan, and I can transfer any questions regarding this.
Thank you, Dustin, very much. Later in the meeting, we'll have the resolution on this report taken care of. Appreciate your work very much. The next item on the agenda is we need a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Do we have a motion in a second?
So, Shannon. President, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the City Council meeting and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We don't have presentations tonight, but we do have a department report, and this will be the land use planner update that Justin Lee has prepared. Justin, are you on the line?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Okay, great. All right, so as you know, we adopted our critical area ordinance update at the last meeting, and a week later, it went into effect. So now that it's in effect, we're going to be working on the community development block grant, the application process, because now we qualify for that. And in all likelihood, it's going to focus on obtaining funding for our wastewater treatment plant, but it's possible we might have some other projects, and we might kind of crowd source some ideas for that. But that's kind of on the horizon for me next. So, and then, so that's the first thing. I'll keep everyone updated as we move forward with the CEVG application process and see how it goes. The second thing I wanted to just check in on is code enforcement. Right around before the pandemic started, we had, we were moving forward aggressively to have citizen review board hearings for the top violators within the city limits. There was about nine of them, and the first step in that process is basically to serve everyone with notice of the hearing, include the date and time of the meeting, and details of the violations that are being alleged. And we had about a 50% success rate of people just, you know, remediating the violations within a couple weeks of that period of time, which is great and not unexpected. But then there was, of course, you know, the other half was about four properties where no action was taken. But due to the pandemic, we had to continue out the hearings, in other words, we haven't held the hearings. And we're, and basically, we're just kind of on a pause right now. We continued them out for a couple months, and basically, we're just going to wait and see what happens and try to maybe restart that process. But we'll see what happens in the coming months. It's a difficult situation, because while technically, we could have the citizen review board hearings, if we kept the occupancy down, we were concerned that it would be prejudicial to the alleged violators to have to maybe participate remotely or not to be able to be there in person. And so we decided to just wait on it. So that's what we're doing right now. And, you know, so that's kind of where things are at with code enforcement, just kind of on a pause right now until we see some developments with everything that's going on. So, and then on top of that, there are two properties actually that we got, we think that were near the end of the code enforcement process, and we obtained a warrant of abatement from the court. And what this allows us to do is to enter on the property and to abate the violations. And there are two properties, like I said, that we have this court-issued warrant for, and the next step is to put out a request for proposal for abatement services, and you know, a company that will come in, a contractor, and they'll come in and clean everything up. And so probably by the next council meeting, you will see a draft of the request for proposal for you to review and approve, and so we can put it out to bid. So that's, and that's the end of a lengthy process, so it's good to see some of these things come to an end, and hopefully, we'll be able to clean up the mess on the two properties. And then the third part that I'm going to talk about is some actual land use issues. We had a, this week, I issued a notice of decision, so the land use decision, that is an approval of a site plan, and we had a site plan application from a company called Woodcrest Real Estate Ventures out of California, and they submitted a site plan application to build a Dollar General retail store at 714 East Simcoe. That's basically the, that lot where the coffee stand is right now. And we approved their site plan, and the notice of that approval was put out, it'll be in the paper Wednesday. And we're doing plan review for that project, so that might break ground in the coming months or so. So, yep, those are the three things I wanted to check in with everyone about. Are there any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions or any comments? If not, Justin, we really appreciate the thoroughness of your report, and it helped the way you walked us through it. Very helpful and good progress, too. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Noah Hom, our Fire Department, Goldendale Fire Department. Do you have any activity?
We've been a little busy, not, you know, nothing really major, a lot of little calls, medical calls, that kind of stuff, but pretty steady and just hopefully, hopefully, we stay that way.
Yep. No business is good business here, right? The next item is our Police Chief, Reggie Bartowski, and he has a report on police activities and a special announcement as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Our current cases for 2020, our calls for service, is right at 1,745 calls for this year. Last year at this time, we're at 1,959, so we've seen a decrease of about 214 calls from last year, so which is a really good thing to be able to report tonight. We have seen a slight rise in some of our thefts around town. We had a motor vehicle theft last week from one of our businesses that we recovered out in the county, and we have been able to identify two suspects, and we've been able to arrest one of the two, and the second one, we're still doing an investigation and hope to be able to file charges to the Clidat County Prosecution Attorney's Office even this week. I do have an announcement for tonight, and I'm just going to go ahead and read it. It says, "Dear Mayor and Counsel, please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from the position of Chief of Police. My last day of employment will be August 31, but my last physical day in the office will be August 21. I will continue to be available by cell phone, by email, and Zoom meetings until August 31 as an advisor. After that date, I will continue to be available to an acting chief or to the new chief for any help that they may need. I received an offer to serve as the Chief of Safety and Security in the state of Florida, and after careful consideration and much prayer, I realized that this job opportunity is too big for me to decline at this time. I was extremely humbled to receive that offer. It has been my pleasure working with the city for the past 20 years. I have many highlights of my career with being a canine officer with my canine dog, Chico, a drug detective, a sergeant for three years, an assistant chief for eight years, and as your police chief for the past five years. The Police Department has amazing employees of the highest caliber. The Police Department is functioning at a high level because of its current employees. I will truly miss all of them. The Police Department has built great relationships with all the law enforcement partners, who I am proud to say are my friends. I would like to help with the transition of the chief position and continue to have it function smoothly after my departure. I'm available to help recruit and train my replacement, and I will make certain that all reports and records are up to date before my last day of work. In this day of technology, all of this is possible, even being in the state of Florida. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work for the city of Goldendale. You are a true professional of the highest caliber, along with the administration staff here. I wish you and the staff all the best, and I look forward to staying in touch with all of you. Counsel, I'd like to say thank you for your unwavering support to the Police Department, even during these uncertain times. Thank you again for allowing me to be your police chief. And that's all I have, Mayor.
That's enough. Thank you. We're very sorry to see Reggie leave. This is a wonderful opportunity for him. He has been an absolutely outstanding Chief of Police, somebody very easy to work with, always cooperating both with his officers, with the city, and with the Sheriff's Department, and any other law enforcement agencies. His skills as a trainer are absolutely excellent, and he's prepared a very, very strong police force as he departs. We're going to miss him tremendously. Everybody will in this town. We're proud to have had you here as a Police Chief. We know Florida's going to get a windfall that they don't even realize what they're getting yet, but we're glad for your family and wish you luck in all of that. We'll have a process that will begin now to work to select a interim chief that will take place on the, or will be effective after the 31st, but Reggie will be our Police Chief until the 31st of August. We appreciate everything you've done for us. It's endless, the service you've given Goldendale and Clidat County. It's very, very hard to find words that can really measure the excellent quality of what you've done for each one of us. We appreciate it, Reggie.
Thank you.
And we'll be thinking about you, and stay safe, stay well, and stay in charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on now. We have a resolution before the Counsel, a six-year street plan that we heard from Dustin Conroy presented at public hearings today. Are there questions or comments on the document? It's Resolution Number 709. It's in your packet, and if you have questions or comments, or we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Excuse me, if you have a public hearing, you should ask if the public have any comments.
Very good. If we have anybody from the public listening, there's a small group of people outside, but because of the limits of how many people we can have in a meeting, they're standing outside the Police Department, outside the City Hall, we've not been able to find a good solution whatsoever so far, but we're trying to find a way that we'll have our public comments from people that are actually in our council room when the governors' rules let us. But is there anybody on the line from the group or any other public member? And Roger, as a member of the public, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just looking at the plan, it looks like an excellent plan. I partly endorse it. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. That's great to know, too. Anybody, any of the councils have remark or comments or questions?
Mayor, this is Myland. Now, we're very pleased that they're going to do the Woodfire Street. It definitely needed to be done, so, and I hope I can complete it this year.
It'll be a very important improvement for our streets, for sure. Any other comments or any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 709, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program for city streets pursuant to RCW 35.77.010.
This is Myland. I'll second it.
Thank you both. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 709, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program for city streets pursuant to RCW 35.77.010. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If not, the resolution passes. Appreciate very much your cooperation and your support of these activities. The next item is a report of officers, and we'll hear from Larry Bellamy, who's on the line.
This is Larry. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. A couple things, I want to take an opportunity here to update the Council on a few public works activities over the last two weeks and things they're planning for future weeks. Now that the Coney Park, including the Little League Field, actually, and in the Little League Field, there is a well pump, and the wellhouse needs to be rebuilt and secured in a better fashion for the well that's located in that field, for that field. So just so everybody knows, we do have an irrigation pump that irrigates the three Little League Fields, and we just completed and rebuilt and secured the wellhouse around that pump site. The other thing that we're doing is we're looking at trying to improve the irrigation system. The, one of the fields, I can't remember which one, is fixed up to the wellhouse through, with an irrigation system, and then the other two still need to have an irrigation system installed, but we're hoping that we can look at doing something like that yet this year while they're actually not planning on the field. So we're looking at that, and then, of course, just the ongoing maintenance of the parks, and they look, they look pretty good as we go throughout the top of the work. Then the next place I wanted to update you on is the improvements we're making at the Animal Control Shelter. We had some air conditioning units go out, and we actually had some voluntary purchase of some air conditioning units, and the city crew installed those new air conditioning units here a couple weeks ago, and then we also installed, one of the requests by the council was, could we take a look at installing a washer and dryer for the, at the Animal Control Shelter? And we have done that. They have a new washer and dryer, but we're still waiting on the final for the electrical. So they'll have new air conditioning units and also another dryer unit out there. Over the past, most of the month of July, we did some cleanup of the logging debris in the Mountain Springs area, getting it ready for slash burning in the fall. That work is now, for this year, has been complete, and we'll be going back up there this fall to do the slash burning. We also did some yellow striping that's complete. Couple of things that we're doing in the future here, we'll include a water leak, waterline leak on Chatfield near Darlin and Riverwood Avenue, somewhere in that area, where we have a water leak that was caused by a contractor who was doing some work at the old blow plants, and so we are looking at repairing that leak. We also have some engine issues with our 10-yarder, so, our 10-yarder dump truck, so we have some guys looking in the shop trying to get that fixed, and then we'll work on sweeping the streets. And I did want to just clarify one item on the TIB grant, just so you're aware, the application, this is the first step, is to adopt the six-year street plan, and the application is due, I believe, August 14. And then the board decisions on those, that Transportation Improvement Board grant request comes about in November of this year. So that's when we'll know if we're funded or not, and then we'll start the process of planning and the construction effort to go along with that. So that's my report for this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry, very much. We'll now hear from the Counsel on the reports of our officers.
Mayor, this is Andy.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Reggie for his servicing of Goldendale, thank him for everything that he's done. It's going to be a true lock for Goldendale, and it's worth his gain. I just want to thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, Andy.
This is Myland. I'd also like to mention that Reggie, good luck on your new position, and definitely keep it tough with us.
That's great. That's great.
Shannon, I just want to say thank you, Reggie, for everything you've done for the city, and I really wish we could give you an extremely high reward, because you're probably one of the best chiefs I've ever seen. Although, that said, you couldn't pay me enough to go to Florida, and I think within a year, you'll be wishing you were back in small, little Goldendale. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Julie. I would like to just reiterate what everybody else has said. Reggie, good luck. I'm very lucky that I have the COVID of working with you in my full-time job with the county. You'll be missed from our department, certainly, and we wish you the best of luck in the board.
Thank you. That's great. Appreciate the comments of all of ours at the Council. On the Mayor's remarks, since I already expressed appreciation for all of Reggie's service, I do want to talk about the fact that we have a small group of people from Goldendale that we couldn't allow in the building because of the governor's proclamations, and they've become tighter and tighter, allows only five people in City Council, and that's what we've got. But we're working on a way to improve that, possibly some solutions of either having the meeting also covered on Facebook. We're working on it. We'll be talking to some of the people represented outside, because we really need the public watching, listening, and participating in these meetings, and I know we're going to be able to find a solution to this. I apologize, because I'm probably the biggest fault for the whole kerfuffle this week of upsetting people over my remarks about conspiracy theorists, and it was a mistake to do it, and something I really regret. The next item on the agenda is the public comment, and I'm not sure, Connie, whether we have anybody outside. I've seen people looking at the sign and hopefully dialing in.
There's numbers on here. I don't know.
There are numbers. Do we have anybody that wishes to make a public comment?
Three minutes.
And three minutes if you do have a comment.
Hello? I'd like to make a comment.
Thank you.
You're echoing.
Hello?
Hi, that's better. And who's this?
I was just wondering if, what are the options we're going to have for making availability to the public? There's churches who are doing their services outside. We also have the fairgrounds as an option. We can sit in the stadium while you guys sit in the speaker booth.
Who's speaking? Who's speaking?
I just need to be discovered more.
Who's speaking, please? I need your name.
This is Janice Burge.
Thank you. That's one of the things we'll be looking at, and hopefully we'll have a group that we can sit down and try to find solutions, and if you text us, email us, or call us with ideas and suggestions, they will be listened to. We appreciate it very much. Are there other people there on the line? I don't know that there is, I haven't.
I guess not.
If there aren't any further public comments, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn city council for tonight.
Hello?
Yes?
This is Robert. I have a question. Where are we going to know? We're out here now, and we're here waiting for a face-to-face with the city council, and we're interested in knowing right now.
I can't tell him. What's your name? Robert what?
I mean, we're not one, we're not one, you know, here, we're looking into it. You know, when are we going to look into it? Tomorrow, next week?
Robert, Robert, what is your last name, please?
My name is Robert Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would imagine we'll be working on it through later part of this week. We'll be talking not only to people that have made public comments, but also anybody else that's interested, and we'll be talking with our city council members to see what they think. We're also going to have to find out from Public Health and from Emergency Operations Center exactly what they will allow us to do different from what we're doing now, because this is not a city rule. This is a government statewide rule, and we don't have any way to just jump the line on that. So we'll have to work it out, and we'll do our best to keep everyone informed. Any others wanting?
Yes, yes. My name is Danielle Clevins, and we understand, and I guess what we're wanting to know is, we keep on being told, okay, you'll have to, or you have to talk to the city council people and all of that. Well, can we be there when that's being talked about? First of all, and secondly, yes, we know, because we keep on hearing that that's going to be talked about in the future, and you guys are working on it. Well, when is it being worked on? There's times that it's been worked on, but we can't have input. That's what we're wanting to know. We want to work on it with you, because we have lots of ideas that can probably help streamline this and make it a lot quicker, a lot faster, a lot easier, and make a lot more people happy, and then it's a win-win situation for everyone.
Now, this is who?
Danielle, somebody.
Yes, that's close enough.
But we can, at least as mayor, I can meet with a small group outside city hall, we can discuss it. So you see some progress being made, and we can do that later this week, if that works for you, but I particularly would appreciate.
That works wonderfully for me. Yeah, and how small that we are, and they're calling about seven, seven or eight houses who wanted to do an ambulance meeting, and we're not giving them ideas, so that you can push that forward to the county.
They said about 10.
Pardon?
They said about 10.
About 10? Okay. Any other comments or questions? We appreciate your patience with all this. It's a stressful thing for everybody, both public and city council, as well as our staff. And we'll get through this, but it's not anything easy. If there aren't any more comments, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Any other public comments?
Mayor, this is Mylan, and I still move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mylan. Do we have a second?
Shannon, second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn city council for August 3rd, 2020. Our next session will be August 17th, same time, 7:00 PM. Hopefully it won't be a virtual meeting, but we're going to have to wait and see what's happening statewide. Thank you, everyone. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good evening.